Alright. Does everyone have their?
Uh huh, yep.
Alright, so 6:15 we'll call them in due to order. So we're meeting tonight with a remote option for some of our board members in accordance with emergency order 12, which allows for us to have a corps of the board without everybody being on site. Safety issues, 19, it's still allowing public access. 91A, we will be doing our votes by roll. And for our two remote members, I need you to state your names, where you are. Let's see, and the reason you were attending remotely. Oh, and is anyone else with you? So we'll start with Holly.
Holly Kennedy, I am at my residence on Plain Road. I'm attending remotely because of COVID concerns and my husband is here, but he's in a different part of the house and not watching the meeting.
Yeah, Jim.
Jim, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Jim O'Malley from my home office on River Road. I am alone right now, although Mary Ann will be coming home shortly, but she will be downstairs. And I am zooming in due to conflicts with work.
What I'm gonna do for Jim and Holly, I'm gonna do my best to make sure that I am, you know, looking up and trying to recognize you. Do you guys have input or questions or whatever? I'm gonna also keep my cellphone on during the meeting. So if you guys have something that you need and I for some reason don't see you, please, you can do the chat or you can text me.
And you can raise your hand.
Yeah. Okay. So, so we'll find you just, you know, don't let, don't let me accidentally ignore you, please. Alright, so first thing up, we've got a group of minutes. We've got the public and non-public minutes of January 27th, and we have the public minutes of February 3rd. If anyone wants to make a motion.
Well, I'll make the motion to accept them all as one block.
A second.
Alright, motion in a second to accept that group of minutes as presented. If there's any discussion, edits, corrections. No? Alright, for those in present, all those in favor say aye.
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 Jim and Holly, aye, okay.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Alright, so we have a discussion of school district meeting. Who wanted to address that or did you just want me to address it? So we did have a meeting, a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen. We are gonna be holding our general questions at the same time. And the school district meeting and town meeting have been moved to May 1st, 2021. So everyone knows that our, you know, that meeting for both the school and the town will be on May 21st, I mean, the May 1st. And the, there'll be more information posted. Alright, so the next step, the next step, we have a COVID-19 discussion. Before we really get into that, I do need to have a brief non-public with the board. So I think for Jim and Holly, we're gonna go into the other, you know, we have to make a motion and all that. But we're gonna go into the other room and we'll conference you invite, you know, via phone. So I'm gonna make a motion that we go into non-public.
I take a second.
Alright, so roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Alright, so Jim and Holly, can you mute and probably turn off your camera? And then I will call you from the other room.
Okay.
Yeah, this tweet that people.
I'm gonna need.
Um.
I have something.
We have.
I'll put it.
Alrighty then. Is Wayne back on yet?
He was, we had to re-turn his computer back on, so. Cause he was nervous.
Cause he was being careful.
We're just gonna give the super, anyone in the audience, give the superintendent just a second to sign back on.
He's coming.
There he is.
This is Joe, if you remember, report again. Did you entertain everybody well?
I know, nobody dug into the candy, what, what? Go for you.
Alright, so let's continue on with the, with the COVID-19 discussion agenda item. Wayne, did you wanna hit that up or did you got someone else in mind?
Wayne, you're on mute.
Wayne, you're muted.
Alright, how's that?
There we go.
Sorry about that. The technology world sort of left me in the wake and I've been trying to swim hard and catch up for years. But there are a few surprises I encounter frequently. So I think what the board wanna hear would be from the principals relative to how their buildings are functioning, and we talked about it this morning. I think they've got a pretty good assessment, but I don't wanna sugarcoat their experience. It's very, it's unpredictable and it's very difficult. But I think hearing from them would make most sense. So this morning, we started with Joe and then talked to Anne, so maybe Joe, if you wanna start.
Sure, so in terms of where we're standing, right now, we have seven students who have been asked either to get a test done or will be staying out of school for 10 days. And we, today, we were kind of, I would say, we were rated as strained when it came to staffing. We had eight positions that we needed people in with only five people to replace them. So there were three spots that were unstaffed today, which causes a strain on the system where case managers are having to cover for parish supports that are not available. We just, no matter how hard we try, we're, we're just not able to get the substitutes. I think though the week that we went remote, we, Ms. Cody and I went over a lot of the rooms and we removed a lot more furniture to improve the ability to do physical distancing. And then we also went over kind of a reset on all the safety measures and mitigation strategies with staff on Thursday, February 4th, in a staff meeting to try and make sure that we're all focusing in on trying to do the things that are gonna, you know, we're, you know, right now, depending on what happens with some of the staff member situations, you know, it's gonna remain strained for a number of days because they have, you know, it's important that we're in front of the kids. Well, that's about it. If you have any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Joe in the elementary school?
I just have one.
Go ahead, Holly.
Okay, so I know last time we had talked about the change in the temperature shaking. I'm just, well, I'm only a couple of days into it, I guess, but how is that going with having it happen in the classroom of that?
So anytime there's a change, I'm sure it's difficult, but like you said, it's only been two days. I haven't heard anything completely negative come from the teaching staff to have to be able to do that extra thing. And it's, we're still, everything is still functioning as planned. We're not, you know, missing anything, so that's the good news.
Jim, did you have anything?
Okay, something I had thought of after.
Holly, hold on a second, I just asked Jim if he had anything.
No, I'm good.
Yeah.
Alright, Julia, you good? Kayla?
Good.
Alright, go ahead, Holly.
Okay, just a follow-up I had thought of after the meeting last time was we had talked about a couple of meetings ago that the screeners were gonna have, like, a list of kids who need to report to the nurse when they show up, so kids who have to turn in a negative test result don't slip through the cracks. So I assume that was happening since we talked about it like a month or whatever ago. But, um, so are the classroom teachers, do they have those lists of their kids or whatever kids? So those kids don't slip through the cracks now on their end?
The classroom.
Since we did have kids slip through the cracks before.
The classroom teachers do get the standard list, but we also have the screeners who have the list of all the children.
Oh, okay, so, so it's, I just was, you know, just making, just wanted to ask to see, since it. Oh, okay, alright, okay, cool, so that, so that shouldn't slip through the cracks because of the change, alright. Thanks.
So at the middle high school right now, we have three students who are out until they meet the 10 days or get approval to come back. Could be longer than 10 days. We have the same struggle that they're having at the elementary school with getting substitutes and coverage. Right now, I have three teachers that are fully remote, two have been added to what we had. One came back, so she's half in and half remote because of her schedule. And I'm expecting two other teachers to request that they teach remotely. So if you think about that, that's five and a half people that we need to provide somebody in. And right now, I have, I do have a schedule worked out, it's pretty crazy, but everybody is pitching in and helping out. I do parent pick up and drop off, and the feedback from parents has been phenomenal and very gratifying. This morning, I had one of our parents who's sometimes quite critical said that she feels that the communication in particular from the district has been phenomenal. And she's a very articulate woman, so coming from her, I thought that was, that was good praise. So, you know, most parents are happy to have their kids in school and we're doing the best we can. It's been challenging coming back because the kids are more relaxed, they wanna be with their friends, they wanna sit close to them. And, and so we have to keep nagging and nagging, that's what I feel, I've turned into a nag. Somebody laughed.
I think we all did.
I think we all did.
But anyway, that's, that's where we are, and the nurse does give us the list of students every day, we get the update.
Okay.
I just got a quick question, you said you anticipated a couple more teachers requesting to be remote. But I assume we have some stipulations that that needs to be.
They go through HR.
Okay, so it's not just, hey, I wanna teach. It's not, hey, I wanna teach remote, they have to have.
Right, they have to have a good reason, and HR makes that decision and works with us to provide, how is the best we can do this?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it was not just a choice that was given, anything.
No, it's not, it's not.
Yep.
Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. Free Tag?
Nope. Nope.
Jim, you good? Alright, excellent. Alright, so is there, we had some information in here too, is that something that one of the nurses wanted to speak to or did?
I've got plenty.
That's just the latest update that we got. Police asked me to put it in the packet for them, they would stay a different date before the last, or the, but she didn't do that information.
Okay.
Yeah, I have lots of notes on it.
Oh, so do I. Alright, so at the last board meeting, we were obviously, we were gonna, you know, keep bringing this up, you know, is there any discussion you guys want to make as far as, you know, any modifications, any whatever? I mean, now's the time to do it.
Do you wanna do this in order or?
If you have questions, comments, concerns, I can give you a first shot at it.
Okay, I have a lot of comments.
Okay.
Um, so looking through this packet, I think it, you know, the more recent studies are showing it's basically more, it's a lower risk for students to be in the building than it is for them not to be in the building. So I will just go through my list. So I think our plan at this point is dated. When we made the plan, there were, sorry, there were no cases really in Hinsdale. So the idea of having one case in the district seemed like a lot. At this point, we've handled contact tracing, you know, the people who are in charge of that have done it multiple times. So that feels a little more.
Just dropped out.
What?
Kayla's audio just totally dropped out, and Anne Free Tags did a little bit earlier too, so.
You could be having bandwidth issues because you keep freezing up too.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to. Okay.
Um, so where was I? Alright, so we have more, more experience with contact tracing. And let me see, so recent studies are showing minimal transmission among students and even less for students to staff. We have safety protocols in place, which are not going to be the case when children are elsewhere. And the main driving factors behind our current policy were to protect our staff and students and to protect the community. And the CDC is also saying that the study they just published that it does, national trends did not suggest that infections in K to 12 age children drove increases in community transmission. And one of their quotes is, "New Hampshire DPHS recommends school minimize out-of-school learning to the extent possible and maximize in-person learning as resources and staffing allow." So obviously staffing numbers can impact this, but I think at this point in the game, you know, March 14th marks one year of this. I think at this point in the game, we need to start thinking about moving forward and we just, we need to be, we know there's an impact when we are out of school. And we already had a gap, you know, testing scores were already not where we wanted them. So I think we need to change our policy to reflect kind of the world we're living in. And I don't think the whole district needs to go remote every time there is a. There's my spiel.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Okay. I'm, I'm just gonna, you know, throw this out there because, you know, when I saw, when I was going through the board packet, you know, obviously I came across this report, which looked really, really familiar to me. So I did go back actually to, I believe it was our October, October 14th, I wanna say it is, meeting. And obviously, this is the more updated version, but this report was included in the stuff that Holly had presented when we were talking about trigger numbers. And just because sometimes when I get stuck, you know, stuck in my head, I, you know, start doing homework and research and stuff. You know, we talked that night about, you know, state numbers, we talked about county numbers, we talked about local numbers. And I think if I, if I was reading my notes correctly, because sometimes I write real fast and then can't read my writing. You know, we had a local number of, I wanna say it was 15 was gonna be our trigger number. I think it was, right around the 12 or 15 or something like that. And I think if I'm looking back at, you know, the police chief's reports, I think the most we've had has been 17 or 18.
And we currently have two.
Yeah, so I think that, you know, you know, if we were looking at trigger numbers before, I think we would have maybe gone remote once. If at all, because I also think that that was during the time when we were proactively remote.
Oh, yep. Yeah, that was actually.
I was just gonna say, that was during the two weeks after Christmas.
Cause we anticipated a rise in numbers, that's.
So, so I, I just wanna put that out because I, I don't have a problem, you know, necessarily with updating and amending our plan. I do wanna make sure that if we do that, you know, we are doing it correctly, thoroughly. We are getting the input from the staff. Obviously, we have two unions we need to discuss with too, you know what I mean? And that it is very clear, you're very clearly spelled out. Do you know what I mean?
Yep.
You know, so, so, so I'm, I'm open to possibly more open than last month. Okay, Holly, did you have anything?
Yeah, I do, I have a couple of things, and I just wanted to, yeah, agree with what, what you said that this is, and I did present other information, more information like the actual in-practice in how I say U29 and a couple of other districts were doing it, but yeah, this, this, the version of it in October of this report is what I presented. And, you know, a corps of the board, you know, rejected that presentation. So, you know, I just, I'm obviously in favor of it because I was kind of in favor of it then. I only voted to go with the go-all-remote and one after one case because it was better than no plan at all, which is how we were going that night. But, um, yeah, so I'm in favor of kind of using a data-driven approach like every other district does. And if we do that, I just have a couple of points that I hope to see in whatever room, like whichever classroom, you know, we identify who's close contact and we contact trace 20, 48 hours back from symptoms started or from when the, the test was taken, which I know there was questions about that at our last meeting. It didn't sound like that was actually done that way, but with, with a recent case then. But, you know, and just spell it out so parents can get on, just like every other district has this on their website. That's how I was able, S A U 29 has a great thing spelled out a couple of times, I think, a month or maybe twice a week or something, their superintendent gives a whole big report, includes all this so they can see exactly where they are. And, um, and yeah, they would just spell out it and, you know, and then we just hold, you know, make sure we're doing it. Like if we have a case and they, somebody lets us know they're, they were positive on like a Thursday and they got tested two days before, we go back two days from that and contact trace. And so that's, I just would like to see it, whenever we decide, be like spelled out on our website like every other district does it so that the parents can see exactly what we're doing, parents and teachers and community members, because this also affects the whole community. So that's all, that's all I have, but I'm in favor of changing it to a more data-driven and also, but also, you know, straining of staffing, if we don't have the staff, you know. I, I'm in favor of allowing, you know, the administration, Wayne, to spearhead that and handle that. Yep.
Jim?
That's all I got.
Um, well, I think that there's a, you know, fundamental difference between the middle high school and the elementary school. I think that maybe controlling the population at the elementary school might be easier. Um, so I think that if we wanted to consider, if there's a case in the elementary school, maybe not shutting down. Or just shutting down that particular grade rather than the whole school might be something to consider. So that's sort of what I'm thinking.
Julia?
I mean, I, I think I agree, I go back to hearing what Kayla's initial statement was. I think when we made our original policy, we all had our fingers crossed that we weren't gonna be talking about it in February and March as much as we still are. And as with the CDC and the current administration, you know, the point kind of being life needs to go on at some point. And we need to make, we've always talked about being fluid with, with how this is handled. And I think it certainly is time to make some changes.
Okay. Anne, can you give us some feedback on what we're talking about? What are your, what are your thoughts?
So the board has a meeting on, I believe, March 10th. I could put a task force together next week. We could filter through the conversation tonight, I think I have a sense of what people are, are thinking. We could make a recommendation that would go out in your packet on the 3rd. And then the 10th, you'd have something more substantive that maybe represents more current thinking. And by then, we'd have a better idea of community transmission in the, you know, late winter. I do think, you know, we're down, we're about, in New Hampshire, we're about 50% of where we were a couple of months ago. But that was, that wasn't a good place to be. So we, I'd obviously meet with the nurses, with the school administrators and try to come up with something that we could get our arms around. The staff issue right now is probably, would suggest to me that anything that would be, any huge change that we tried to implement tonight, you know, might, might fall because we don't have all that information available. So I, I would like a little time, and I think I could get something to you at your next meeting in March to vote. Vote on, reflect more current thinking. I don't disagree with anything that's been said by board members tonight, so I think we can probably put something together.
Okay.
So my only concern with that is it's a month away. So in the meantime, if something happens, what do we do? So then we end up, the whole district goes remote again. I think we need some form of revision sooner than a month away in case something happens in the meantime. Cause I think a whole month is a long time to go at this point.
And it's after the February vacation.
Right.
Holly?
Um, then I was thinking that too, exactly same thing, Kayla, because, you know, something could happen between now and when we get this. And what Jim said, I, I think also makes sense even for whatever plan we come up with. It's, because the middle high school, they're moving around so much that, you know, it's easier to kind of, you know, determine and isolate whatever the elementary. Maybe if there's a case, um, you know, we look at it that way, like if there's a case in, you know, the elementary school, you know, the elementary school goes remote or, and I don't know if that really would work, but you know what I mean? Maybe we do it building level, and then if there's a case at the district level, like, you know, if they haven't been in the other buildings, nobody goes remote kind of thing, you know? No, I mean, nobody at the two schools will go remote, but.
What are your thoughts?
I think that would be better than what we've got now.
Yeah.
Um.
But not as good as where we're going, so we're just, yeah, exactly.
It's a, it's a, it's a step in the right direction.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Accommodations.
But I really think Wayne needs to have further discussions with the principals and the principals need to have further discussions at their end before we can really change much substantively.
Yeah.
Alright, um, so we're trying to catch up with what I'm hearing. So we, looking at, we're looking at getting a proposal for a revamp plan in March, but we want something that's stopgap. And Jim makes a very good point that, you know, we actually need to, even with the stopgap, we need to give Wayne time to talk to the principals and the key players. So it doesn't sound like we'll get the stopgap tonight, but what kind of timeframe are we looking at for a stopgap? Anne?
I'm gonna suggest that maybe by the end of next week, you go out with some sort of stopgap because February vacation, we already know, lots of people are traveling. They're, they're conditioned now to know, oh, I'm gonna travel, they'll call the nurse, when can I send my child back to school? So people are anticipating, I think, that there's gonna be some redirection from the board.
Okay.
I think it's a good time.
Alright, how does everybody feel about that?
I've heard that in, I've heard that in the community too, Anne, I've heard that in the community too, that is there gonna be redirection from the board or you're gonna go remote after February break, da-da-da, around February break talk, so I agree with you, I've heard that too.
Alright, so how's everybody feel about getting a stopgap proposal next week?
So what do we do if something happens in the meantime? Can we at least agree to do it by building if possible?
I, I would be okay with that.
I think that would at least be something.
Jim, what do you think? Are you okay with, you know, for the time being, going by building? Jim, what do you think? Are you okay with, you know, um, for the time being, going by building, then looking at us, you know, looking at getting some type of stopgap plan? For next week? Would cover us for a few days?
I'm okay with that, but I, I, I think I'd like to hear what Joe and Anne have to say about it too, though.
I just said my say.
Joe, you have any input on that?
Well, I, um, I did talk with the nurse, uh, today, anticipating this is coming up, and, um. She feels like we could cohort by classroom with the situation that we're in right now. When we had our meeting with the staff, they didn't, um, have the, a huge dissension around this. But you don't always hear that either, so you never know, but, um, I do think that, you know, we could, if there was a case. In our building, we could have a situation that we would know exactly who was in contact, close contact with them and. And the recommendation from the nurses to have that class go remote for the ten-day period or until, you know, they get tested. Including the staff members that are in that classroom.
I think that makes sense. At the elementary level, if they're all in a classroom all day, I think that needs to be the standard anyways, just because. They're all in one classroom together all day.
I, I mean, they go to like, you know, speech and things, like they move a little bit, right, but not enough that you won't be able to figure it out.
Right, and we, we record every time when they're entering speech or anything like that, so if they. If it was the kid that had close contact, like say a kid in classroom B. Turns out to be positive, that whole class would go, but maybe only student number one goes to speech. He or she may not be a close contact, and speech does not have to be remote at that point in time because they haven't had close contact. Now, should student number one turn out to be positive over the course of their quarantine, then that puts the speech person in a different place.
It also impacts, um, how the after-school program operates too.
Alright, so, where, where are we landing? Are we gonna do, you know, building specific?
Do you want me to make a motion to, or does that need to be something?
Well, it gets complicated because it's a multi-part thing, because we have, we have what we're gonna basically do for a couple of days.
Right.
Um, then we have, you know, the intermediate plan that we're gonna get next week. And, you know, you and I have, um, a meeting with the union, that's like a regular check-in.
Right.
And we can start, you know, picking their brains.
Right.
Um, I'm also, Holly, just to be aware, I'm also, I've also asked Wayne to set up a, um, meeting with the support staff union to also kind of have a, just a general check-in. Um, so I'll get you that time, to see if you're available. Start getting this.
Right.
We can start getting that feedback, you know, for the stopgap, then the plan in March.
Maybe we should let union leaders know that, to kind of put it out there to staff, so if there is. Feedback or of some form, if the union needs to advocate in some way, they can.
You mean prior to your, the, us meeting with them, that makes sense.
Yeah, just so they have information, so we're not having a meeting to have a meeting.
And then have another meeting, to get the information, yeah, absolutely, that makes sense.
Wayne, can you make that communicate, do that outreach with the two union presidents?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so we can have a more productive meeting next Wednesday?
Correct.
Holly, go ahead.
I have a question about the stopgap, so we were saying a stopgap like, but next week, when are we having another meeting to? Vote on this stop, like, how's that working?
We have to figure that out.
Oh, okay.
I'm trying to wrap my head around, this is actually, it may not sound like it because we're going back and forth, this is actually a very complex meeting, alright? Actually trying to keep this meeting going, so let me figure out the next meeting later, because I need to do, you know, kind of this.
Well, I'm just saying, yeah, because we're talking about. Yeah, we're talking about voting on the stopgap, so, yeah, that's all.
So we could make a motion to. In the event of a positive COVID case, go remote by building until the board is presented with an updated plan.
Oh, that's good.
I'm really good with that. Jimmy, you alright with that?
Yeah, in fact, I'll second that.
Okay.
Alright, motion in a second, any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, okay, um, so Holly and Jim are aye, and opposed? Alright, so that's what we're gonna do. Alright, and Julia's, Julia's gonna put together a communication piece for that, just so we can share that. And if Wayne, if it's okay, uh, to have the principal share that with staff? Yep. Okay. Holly?
I just have one other COVID que.
Sure, go ahead.
Question?
Yep.
Okay, um, so there's like a lag, I think, with this bandwidth.
There is absolutely a lag, and it's really, really distracting.
Yep. Yeah. Um, so, so, like I had said, and, and Anne was, Anne was talking about too, about people who are traveling over a break. And some people had asked me, are we gonna proactively go remote after break like we did in the holidays? And I said, you know, we, 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 I'd bring it up, but, you know, I, I think February break. Uh, my gut is, people don't travel like they did for the actual Christmas and holidays and stuff, so. I just wanna make absolute sure, if, if, if we don't go remote like that proactively again, that they, we really enforce. The quarantine for ten days, because as I said at our December meeting. It was clear, the people who were in Florida was not, were not back in New Hampshire the day after Thanksgiving, and they were in school three days earlier than they should have been allowed to be in school. So I would just really hope we enforce it strictly, find out when they got back from traveling and really enforce it.
So in, in theory, I think that's fine, but I don't know how. I, I, I mean, how are you gonna, you, you can't sit, sit at someone's house and say you were gone, you know what I mean?
I wanna see your itinerary.
No, but, but I'm just saying. No, no, but I really, I really doubt people, I mean, come on, we saw it on social media, I really doubt people really came back and said to the nurse, oh. I was in Florida, but I was back home in New Hampshire the next morning, come on, the day after Thanksgiving, so we just, we, I, I just, I'm just. It was really clear, we didn't follow it, so I just really would like to see it followed.
I just don't know how that's, I don't know how that's legitimate.
We can put beyond our, that's just beyond our.
I don't know, I don't know how we can police that.
We can put the information out there and let families know this is the.
The school, they were back the day after Thanksgiving. No, 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 hey, fine, yeah, you're not getting my point, but, okay, that's okay.
No, we're getting your point, but at the same time, you, we can't, I don't know, we have to, I think, have trust.
Picture from on social media and say, hey, I saw a picture on Facebook.
No, but I'm, what I'm saying is, and I'm not calling anybody out, but what I'm saying is, is I don't. I, I just find it hard to believe that a parent actually told the school, I was back from Florida the next morning from Thanksgiving, and that, you know. I'm, and I just, you know.
So I.
I think it's on our end that we didn't count the days right, is what I'm saying, is what it appeared to be.
I, I agree with the, I agree with the, the sentiment of what you're saying and where you're going and the thought process behind it, absolutely one hundred percent. You know, especially when we look, when we looked at, you know, Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's, that's the trifecta of holidays.
Yeah.
But, if someone calls up and says, I'm back, we can't say, no, you're a liar.
No, no, see, that's where you're not, that's where you're not getting what I'm saying.
I guess maybe I'm not, but.
Yeah, you're not, that's, I'm just saying, I don't, I highly doubt that somebody told us that. I think they told us the day they really came back, and we counted wrong. Based on the conversation that we had in December, at our December meeting, and I just really, just hope we, we zone in a little better on, on our end. Counting it correctly. I'm not saying anything about parents, I'm saying it was on our end, based on the conversation we had a couple of months ago.
Okay, so for February break, this whole new vacation, whole new scenario. So we can determine now, if a family travels, what is the expectation four days out? How long do they need to not be in school one, upon returning?
According to all of our policies and the stuff we got from the nurses and the CDC and the DHHS, it's ten days from the date you return to New Hampshire, so.
With that, though, they do have the, like, side note of. You can get a test and that is, makes it seven days, correct or not correct?
I don't know, I'd have to read it again, but.
Exposure was the only instance where the seven days.
Yeah, where you, where you, where you can't test out of exposure, yeah, but travel, um. And it was fourteen days at that point, and now they changed it to ten, so whatever the. Yeah, it's not on this one here, but we, I mean, it was in the stuff the nurses gave us, so we can look at it. Was, you know, yeah, my whole point, my whole point was just to, um. You know, we just wanna be aware of it, because with the variants going around and stuff, you know, we just wanna make sure we're following it, that's all. Especially if people go like to some of these states that have a lot worse numbers.
So we can put out more communication again, reminding families, and we can put the updated guidelines.
Yes, do you wanna make a note of that?
If you were, if you were talking, it was quiet for, you blocked out for quite a while there, so.
So, Holly, we're gonna do updated, uh, parent notification, reminding families of the expectation if they travel. And we will include the most up-to-date CDC guidelines.
Awesome, yeah, see, I didn't hear any of that, so thank you.
Alright, are we ready to move on?
I am.
I am.
Alright, Jimmy, you good, good to move on? Alright.
Yes, I'm sorry, absolutely.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so I'm looking, uh, for motion on a final reading, uh, policies, J I C C, J L C D, J L C D dash. F one, Anne, yeah, F one, J L C D, F two, J L, J L C D, F three, J L C D dash R.
Yes, I'll make that motion to accept.
Alright, motion in a second to accept that group of policies as a final reading, any discussion? No? Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Who's an aye, Holly's an aye? Alright, um, then we have the first reading of policies, E B B B, J L C H, J L C I. Those are first reading.
I just had a question, okay, fine.
You have a motion, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Motion in a second to accept those three policies as a first reading, and your question.
So I just, for J L C I, it's the Coordinated School Health Program. I just wanted to find out, since Anne is, Anne, you're the head of that, right? So I just wanted to find out if we will have to do anything differently because of the policy, and. I just noticed the annual update about the implementation and coordination of the ten components that they listed. Okay, and it has the ten components already, okay, perfect, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't changing things we were noticing.
Okay, great. Any other discussion on those policies? Alright, all those in favor, say aye. Alright, Jim and Holly are an aye, I'm an awesome. So we have any other business to be conducted by the board? I have one thing, do you guys have anything? Jim, no, Holly, no? Um, so the only thing I have is, um, Anne, did you? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you, I thought you were looking at me for something. Alright, so the only thing I have is, um, and you guys all received an email that we did get a, um, correspondence from the Hinsdale Federation of Teachers Union. Um, regarding the, um, citizen comment section of our last meeting. And they just want to make a sure, uh, make us aware that, um, the opinions expressed there are not the, uh, opinions of their membership. Alright, so if we can just note that in the minutes, and we will be, also be discussing that a little bit more in-depth and non-public. But we can, I, I just wanna acknowledge that we did receive that correspondence. Alrighty, anyone? Okay, so, uh, let's, um, go through these reports, we have the financial report.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. About my report or any other financial matters?
Anyone have any questions for Tom? Kind of been picking his brain quite a bit lately, so. Alright, Jim, did you have anything for Tom?
No, I'm good.
Thank you. Alright, Tom, you got off easy tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, uh, curriculum report, uh, so, uh, Kat, I believe is here.
Wait, wait, actually, can I? I'm sorry.
Well, what, what is it, Jim?
I apologize, I wanted to rescind that. I did have a question for Tom, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Tom.
I'm here.
Yeah, at the end of your report, there was, uh, an itemized list of things done. The month of January, and it talks about, uh, closure of the TD Winchester branch, I was just wondering if you can kinda elaborate a little bit on that?
Yes, sir, um, the TD account manager, excuse. To notify me they were. In, uh, closing the branch in when you office and ask me for any feedback. Uh, I told him that most of our banking needs are done at the Brattleboro branch. So I don't see this impacting us at this point in time. And of course, the Keen is all still available.
So, do, um, deposits have to be made every day at, if, if, if a check is received?
I'm not so critical for checks, although I encourage checks being deposited, uh, quickly. Um, more so for cash, and in the event that we receive cash. Uh, for example, if we're in school and folks are bringing money for lunches to put on deposit. Um, in the event that there's no one available to get that to a branch, we do have a safe at the high school. And at the SAU office, so, uh, cash is kept under control.
So it's not mandated that if somebody gets cash for some, whatever purpose, that they have to make that deposit same day? They wouldn't have to interrupt the daily regime, regime for making a trip to either Brattleboro now or Keen?
That's correct, it is not a mandate, it is a recommended best practice.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Alright, so now we'll move on to curriculum, so Kat, Kat, you're up after a short delay.
Thank you. So I gave you, uh, an article on the apprenticeship model, and what I'm trying to do is find. Something that would help people kind of wrap their heads around where I think you might wanna go, so my first question is. Is that model of education that would really bring in the best, I think, of the ELO program that we have? And kind of bring that into the classroom, is that something that interests the board?
Go ahead, Kayla.
So, to me, this sounds actually a lot, kind of like the direction we were heading with PACE. This really, I think, is very close to PACE, so I think. We've already kind, we've got that ball rolling, obviously with COVID, not as much as we'd like anymore, but. I think this is very closely matched to the direction we were already headed in and have already kind of trained and spent money, so. I, I think they're the same thing with different names, basically.
Okay. Polly?
She's mute, Holly, you're muted.
I know, I was trying to do it with my spacebar, and it didn't work, but, um, no, I really don't have anything to say. Any, any input.
Jim?
Um, I, I agree with Kayla on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm gonna say, I've, I've, you know, long been an outspoken, um, supporter of, you know, ELO and PACE. And, you know, the, um. You know, what those programs embody, you know, the personalized learning, they, and, and all of that, so, um. I would say anything that supports that, that goes in that direction is something I'm, I am in favor of. Does that kind of answer your question, Kat?
Yes, because I wanted to make sure that I'm not assuming that I'm actually. Yes, because I wanted to make sure that I'm not assuming that I'm actually. Aligned with what you're thinking, that would be kind of important.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would agree with that.
I guess my other thought is that if this is the direction that you want to go in, then. We may need to have some challenging conversations around what things currently look like, if we know what our data looks like. So that way we could better understand what where we're at so that and where we want to go. Right, what are the action steps we need to take? Why do we need to take them? So I just. Maybe some challenging conversations surrounding this.
I think that would be expected, at least to me it is.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that. I'm thinking that. I'm going to be presenting a plan that's about twenty pages long and that's a pretty dense twenty pages. I'm thinking that you probably don't want to have a discussion at the beginning of March during the the board meeting. I'm wondering if. The board would be interested in having a second meeting later in March, like around the twenty fourth possibly, but that would be for.
We can, we can have a work session. We can, we can have a work session for that, Kat. That's not a problem.
Yeah, I think having it separate would be more appropriate anyways.
Absolutely.
All right, Holly, you okay with doing a work session?
I'm okay with the work session. I just have a N H S B A Board of Directors meeting on the twenty fourth.
We can, we can figure out the date.
Yeah, I'm just saying she, because she threw out the, she just threw out the twenty fourth and that's like the only date I can't. But I'm I'm good other any other time other than that, yeah.
All right, so I will leave that for you to figure out.
All right.
And then I just wanted to let you know that by sheer coincidence, as we are talking about helping students. Recover from the losses of learning that they've had due to COVID, we are getting eight hundred fifty seven thousand nine hundred forty one dollars. From the government. It just so happens that that is to cover the losses in learning. Everything that would cover the losses and learning would also be tied into the strategic plan. Which means that we have a lot of of money now that could be used over the couple of years. Now in September of twenty twenty three. To help move the district forward and and really put us in a better position possibly than even where you were. Prior to the pandemic.
Yeah, actually, that's a big chunk of change. That's a really big chunk of change.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. So any questions or?
Does anyone have any questions? Any questions for Kat?
No, I think we can wait for the bigger picture.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
All right, then we will move on to the technology report.
Good evening. Mrs. Diorio, do you have something to pass out to board members for me there?
Hey, what's what's going on? What's going on? Is that what that is? I was just, I was being snarky. I was being snarky, Deb.
I, you know, I think I've been kind of asking about it, so. You have my board report and I think this is the, you know, other months I brought you good news and it's been like. Oh, it's not the laptops. So this month I'm here to say it's the laptop.
You know, Deb, your entire report could have just been this picture.
Well, let me tell you, when I wrote that report last week, are you ready for this? When I wrote this report last week, I I I I'm not kidding you. I I call them every month and I called them days before my report was due and said, it's that time of the month again, folks. I need to know what's going on. And last Wednesday. I was told they were coming in July.
He did not want to come.
Deb's like, I'm not writing July.
Well, then so the, my my salesperson said to the person that told him that, go back and find a different date. So. He has been working with me month after month to find something that will be will fit within our price range, will fit what we're trying to do. And something became available. So we are not, we do not have the same laptops that we ordered back in June. I have a slightly more expensive laptop. But I have a hundred and ten laptops sitting in Mexico tonight. So they arrived today, um, so that's why it's couldn't be part of my board report because I wasn't going to jinx it yet again. When I told you. And Joe was sworn to secrecy. I said, I said to Joe, can you keep a secret? He said, no. And I kept these for a week. So they are here. Shannon will start working on them tomorrow. Our plan is to get them into the hands of students when they come back from February vacation. I'd like to get them into the hands of the staff members who are expecting them prior to February vacation, so they'll have them to use over February vacation. So. With that, if you have any questions about my written report, I'd be happy to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions for Deb?
Nope, nope, I'm just happy.
No, but I did want to comment that that. Application that puts people's faces up in like a college seating environment, I thought that was very nifty.
It is. I I'm actually. And I I'm offering a workshop next week. About all the different products within Microsoft three sixty five that are free that can be used. As far as one of those items that can be used, so I have a, just put it out yesterday. I've had a couple of people sign up for it and we'll see how that goes.
Great.
Right, thank you very much, Deb. All right, so principals report, so I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've given you a lot of information here and just some reminders about some of the suicide prevention, things that we need to get done. Sean Robinson has put up a link for all of our constituents to do the safety and suicide awareness training. Before April first, because that's the nine month deadline. And then I know that we'll be working on your your. Policy and getting that done before end of May. So that's in there just as reminders. Joe and I finally got notification on the emergency operation plan and we decided what we include in here for you to look at. Because I know all board members are on that emergency planning piece, so there's there's some work there that needs to be done, but overall, I don't think it's too. Daunting. I know we need to do an armed assailant assailant drill, kind of like what we used to do with S R O Dalasandro. A tabletop drill probably, and so we'll be working on that. I'll take any questions.
So just about that last piece, is that just staff?
When we did the tabletop drills before, it was Joe and I, the superintendent.
Scenario, so it's as if, you know, we're separate by the buildings and everything and it helps to identify the. The big part that we always find in these situations is communication, lines of communication are critical.
So, but it wouldn't be like students or anything, okay?
No, no, they suggest a tabletop drill.
Okay, perfect.
Holly, you had a question?
Yeah, and just Ann froze up there for a little bit, so I I'm not sure if she said this, but I I did have a question. And I I think I caught part of it before she froze about, you know, we had this the suicide prevention policy that we're looking at. And that we had approved back in March of twenty twenty and the the plan, I think you said. You would have the plan to bring to the board by the end of May and and that that's, I just wanted to check because I I didn't. Didn't remember us having that plan in place and I think it's a typo in the policy. I think it is a typo, don't you? Yeah, May thirty first, twenty twenty, and we just had approved it in May and March of twenty twenty, so it so it is May of this year. That's what I wanted to check on. Because I know we didn't have the plan all put together yet and I was like, there's no way it was two months from the policy, you know, so. Um, so though I think you answered it, right, that you're gonna have it for this May. Yes. Okay, thanks. I know Wayne is working on it. Yeah, yeah, because I circled that because I was like, I think that's a typo. And then then when I heard you before you froze, say this May, so, okay, cool. Very good.
Jim, did you have anything for Ann?
Uh, no.
In the only comment that I had on the emergency, the emergency management plan, it's actually kind of more district wide than the building specific.
Yeah.
And I remember when we had had our first case here in the school. I was approached after a selectmen meeting by the fire chief and he was like, oh, well, you know, it would have been nice if, you know, you know. Emergency management had been notified of any kind of whatever and I and I think that's something that's in here. There was noted in the plan, I noticed that we need to make sure that we are in contact with emergency management. You know, beat out the police chief, the fire chief, all that, so no, we know we had brought it up before, so I just want to make sure that we. You know, stay focused on making sure those lines of communication are open.
And Joe and I talked about the fact too, the new chief really hasn't been engaged in any of this planning with us yet, so we really want to make sure he gets on board.
Yeah, and and he would be, I mean, he would be very enthusiastic and very. I don't know the word I'm looking for, he'd be very enthusiastic to get proactive. He would actually welcome the opportunity.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I think so.
All right, if there are no further questions for Mrs. Freekang, then we will move on to Mr. Bogio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You have my report. If there's any questions, try and answer them.
Anyone have any questions for Joe? No, nothing, really?
Nothing.
All right, Jim, nothing?
I'm good.
All right, so that brings us to the superintendent report. Wayne, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You have my report. I think we've covered most of what I put in my report. This month, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Wayne? Polly, nothing?
Nope.
Jim, nothing?
I'm good.
All right, um, just make sure I don't. Hey, no, I think I'm good. All right, so before we hit on, head on to committee reports, is Karen Thompson on?
Yes, I am.
Karen, uh, can you, and we talked a little bit about it in half, then I'm just, I I. Very happy that, you know, we got this big grant thing that we haven't talked about yet. And I was hoping you could tell the board a little bit about, you know, what I'm talking about.
Sure, I can tell them a little bit about it. I had I had my first meeting today. With online meeting with New Hampshire Learning Initiative. The great, they, we were asked to be part of this grant back in the 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 summer. It was a grant written by the DOE and New Hampshire Learning Initiative. Around out of school, out of school time career pathways and they, one of the requirements was. The schools had to be twenty first century learning schools, so they reached out to four schools in the state. And asked us to partner with them. Our job was simply, Wayne gave me far too much credit when he talked about in his report. I did not do that much writing of it. Our job as individual schools was to develop partnerships with, it's a STEM grant. So it's really to focus on how we can do K through twelve career opportunities and career exploration. And help our students be more prepared to receive industry recognized credentials by the time they leave high school. So our job was to partner with local, with local businesses in the STEM field and to get letters of intent from them. And to talk a little bit in the grant about how we intended to work with them. So that was the work I had to do at the beginning. We were very lucky that New Hampshire received, the Department of Ed received two point nine million dollars, so. Our, I just heard today that the grant in New Hampshire was the, got the most money out of the force, only four of the states. Three of the states in in the country got it, so and Hinsdale is the most, the smallest school. Out of all the states and one of their focuses is how will we take this money? And really develop opportunities for kids K through twelve in a very rural setting. So there will be a lot of eyes on the smaller schools that are involved in this, ours being the smallest. I think there'll be a little more, a few more eyes on us. So it'll be fifty thousand dollars a year for five years and it's going to afford us. These opportunities to really look at how can we do some of the work that Joe had worked on before with me around. ELOs, if you will, for younger students, as well as how can we incorporate some of the mission of the of the after school program and what they're doing? How can we, how can we utilize some of this money or some of this work for some of our students that are out of school, after school time? So it's not just for after school time, it can be used at any time. GS Precision is the company that we have partnered with, although. Because it's a STEM grant, they did let us know today that they would expect that we would partner with other other businesses too. But we just had to give one to start with. I'm not worried. I think that we're going to have plenty of other opportunities in terms of our connections with businesses. Year one will be more of a planning time, which I was happy to hear that. I I was under the impression that we had to get up and rolling by September. We don't, although GS Precision would like us to, we'll see how that moves along. It's a pretty exciting grant and that they're, one of the big things that they looked at in New Hampshire that gate got us extra points in the grant writing is that. Students will be able to be paid for some of their apprentice internship work and we don't have to pay them, the grant will. So obviously, you know how I feel about not putting that out there because I think that sometimes waters things down a bit for our kids and they jump on to be paid rather than to learn. So we'll, we'll navigate those waters cautiously, but it's really, really exciting and aligns beautifully with. Our mission and where some of the board goals that they had, that you have in terms of us personalized personalizing things and. Really becoming a performance assessment companies competency based school. It's all about that, so I'm. As you can imagine, doing a happy dance because it's it's just exactly what. That that I love to do and I think it's going to be exciting for for many, many of our kids K through twelve.
So I just want to emphasize to everybody that sixteen, between four states, sixteen schools in the entire country. All right, we are one of them. And, you know, we, you know, Karen, you know, is very modest and, you know. I think that I want to say thank you in the minutes officially to Karen for her work and obviously others as well. But, you know, you know, Karen's at the forefront and she kind of brought us to this point where we are being looked at for some of these things in a positive way. And that's always a good thing because we're not always looked at. We're looked at in a very positive way and, you know, sixteen schools in the entire country, we're one of them. I think that's pretty impressive.
I just, I just want to add the other schools in the state are Manchester, they have a districts, I should say, Manchester, Conway and Laconia. And Hinsdale, so we are in there with some pretty big districts, so this is going to be interesting.
The biggest.
Yeah. So thank you, Karen. I I know that you weren't planning on speaking, so I I, you know, kind of, you know.
That's okay, no worries. My pleasure.
Alrighty, all right, let's see if we can blast through these committee reports. Go ahead, yeah, absolutely.
So, yeah, I I think that that's one of the benefits of us being our own independent district. That that we, you know, kind of were able to be part of this, you know, when people argue about. Costs and stuff like that, having our own control of our own district, you know, allowed us to be part of this initiative. And I think in the next couple of months, when we start looking at. Committee committees, maybe we want to consider having an ELO committee.
Jim, this this grant also requires me, requires us as a district to have an advisory committee, advisory board around this grant. So it would be nice to have that just roll into an ELO advisory, which which would make perfect sense. We also have to have a student advisory as part of this, so. That also is very exciting. So thank you for bringing that up. That is a great suggestion. We also have to have a student advisory as part of this, so um that also is very exciting. So thank you for bringing that up. That is a great suggestion.
Awesome.
Great.
All right, are we ready for committee reports? All right, uh, personnel. Holly?
Um, so uh we approved the support staff contract and the support staff ratified, so um next step is uh you know, that cost the cost items are gonna be on the warrant for district meeting and otherwise, we're, you know, we're all set for personnel.
All right, health and wellness?
Uh, we have not met. Um, and the meeting that we were supposed to have has not yet been rescheduled as far as I know.
All right, budget committee.
Um, so we had the budget hearing, I think it was it was just last week. Yeah, it seems longer ago, but it was last week. And um, yeah, you know, the but our warrant, everything was um recommended uh by the budget committee and the school board, so next step for that is um May. So we have lots of times. Yeah, May first, so we have lots of time to get our head together with our talking points and whatnot. So, good.
Staff development?
No, thank you.
No.
Uh, legislation, NHSBA.
Um, so I asked Ann to include a couple of articles at the end of our packet. Uh, one was Voices of Leadership, and the other one was Ten Laws for Governance, uh Great Governance. And uh so you guys probably had the opportunity to read that. But that was out of the monthly magazine that we get uh from the National School Board Association. Um, I thought those were um both very interesting. And I thought maybe Wayne might be able to give us an update um if possible on the public hearing for House Bill six oh seven.
No, I I really uh had they had an overwhelming response relative to testimony, and I believe they've spread it out, but I don't know that there's been any action.
All right, thank you, Wayne. That's it.
All right, emergency management. I don't think there's anything. Wyndham Career Center? No, nothing? HASP Advisory.
So we just met today. Um, a large part of our conversation was about the exciting career pathways grant we got. Um, so I can just kind of go down. We passed the risk assessment. Mary Ann will be attending virtual Beyond School Hours Conference. Uh, she has after-school program for middle school in the afternoon homework club, and she's able to do in-person and remote, so kids who are remote are able to receive additional support if they need it. Uh, the elementary school, she has after-school going as well. Yeah, she's received funds from MRC to do, really, they ended up being for supplies since COVID kinda threw a wrench in her original plan. And she's starting to plan summer, and that was pretty much, yeah, right?
I believe you were correct.
All right.
All right, so um let's see, has selectmen, um basically, we all have that joint meeting. And May first is town meeting and school district meeting day. And that was, that's kind of the big news. All right, facilities?
Uh, facilities will be having the monthly meeting here, I believe, at the end of next week. Um, and we'll be talking about the um the idea of the digital sign to replace the 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 hand one that we have out there. And one thing that we did look at when we were getting ready to to have that joint meeting with selectmen was I asked Wayne to talk to Sean um about the gym and just this just informational now at this point. But with social distancing, um you can fit about a hundred and thirty-five people in that in the gym, the high school gym. Um, and if you utilize the stage, that would uh fit another twenty, you could fit about another twenty-five people up there. So if that is for something that could be utilized by the school at all for some event, um, you know, as we get towards the end of the year, those are the actual measured-out numbers based on the current guidelines.
Cool. Thank you, Jim. Uh, community connections, I don't think there's anything.
No, we're still
quiet.
Well, we've been talking about.
Yeah, but there's nothing yet. So, all right, um behavioral support?
We meet again in April.
And joint loss?
Nope. We just, they just met last month. I don't remember now when the next one is, but it's a couple of months in in advance, so.
All righty. Uh, so then we're on to citizens' comments. Ann, do you wanna facilitate that?
I do not. I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mike Darkey, you have anything to add?
Uh, I did want to ask a question. Um, what is the, I guess, the district stance, and are you guys following House Bill twenty?
I'm not sure which one, which House Bill twenty is. Which one's that?
The voucher.
Yeah.
House Bill twenty is the thirty-six million or whatever for vouchers for um I believe in-state. Is it public or private? I'm not sure how exactly it's playing out. Just wondering. I I guess, you know, is there any concern of impact or anything like that? I mean, we don't have any, I don't even think we have any eligible schools really around us, but.
Wayne, do you wanna quickly address that?
So the governor spoke to that again uh today. Um, he's in favor. The superintendent as a superintendent groups uh around the state are pretty uniformly not in favor, uh and their argument seems similar uh in no matter where you go, and it is uh public education is underfunded based on the Constitution mandate around the providing inadequate education and to take public funds to end up in private schools. I mean, basically, it would be a voucher, uh dollars would follow the student, student could take the check, go anywhere they they want. I don't see the impact immediate uh on Hinsdale, but it would have certainly a huge impact on funding for public education. And every time there are students that leave public schools and go elsewhere, the legislative weight of their interest and agenda uh goes with it. And so we need all the supporters we can get. So I understand the arguments. Uh, the governor is very much a supporter, although he's, you know, typically pressed before he comes out in support. Obviously, our commissioner uh is a proponent. So I don't know if we want to take go on record, but that's certainly up up to the board.
There's links that that are posted out there that you can go in and say you don't like this bill.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I did that one, yes.
Yep. Yeah, I did.
I just wasn't, you know, I was just not in the mindset. I wasn't thinking legislation stuff. I actually did do that petition, yes.
All right, thanks. I I just wanted to know kind of where we were because it seems to me that this well, it I I think it's unfair to the public schools that have to provide education for everybody to be competing for money with the private schools, and I also think that it really only impacts the other side of the state, but, you know.
Thank you.
Uh, Deb, do you have anything? Deb, do you have anything to add?
All right, I'll start in.
Thank you. Kat, do you have anything to add?
I'm good, thank you.
Donna, do you have anything? Donna Foster? Sean Rob-
I was having trouble on mute. No, I'm all set. Thank you, everybody, for all your hard work.
Thank you, Donna. Sean Robinson? iPad Pro? Patty?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Megan?
Um, just, I think you guys are doing great. Um, thank you for all your hard work. I certainly don't envy your job with all your decision-making, but I think you're doing great and um really excited about the grant that Karen was talking about. I think that's gonna be great to build on what you guys are already doing and good for the students in the town. So, thank you.
Thank you. Teresa, do you have anything? Liz, do you have anything? Tom, do you have anything?
All set, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, um, so then we just, we do have one non-public, we need the motion to go into non-public.
I'll make a motion.
All right, motion is second to go into non-public. We got a roll call.
Yes.
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 Holly, yes, Jim?
Yep.
All right, so if you guys can hang on, um, so I'll need, obviously, you two. I need Wayne and Joe. Can you stick around?
Sure. Holly, can I just ask? I can't.